I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the July 15th County Commission meeting. I would remind you to silence your cellphones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Kelly. And Ken is in the front row if you need something for listening devices.
Okay. Routine business. Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Are there any additional comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of July 8th, 2014.
Moved. Second.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $1,807,095.55.
Move the bills. Second.
And a motion and a second. Commissioner Barth, a comment?
Madam Chair, this week's bills are a little higher than normal. Included among them are $197,000 for armor for their care at our jail. The Highway Department has $989,000 for a seal coat project, $98,000 for a bridge deck, another $100,000 for a bridge replace- two bridge replacements. We have $9,000 in there for four funerals. We have five occurrences of the maximum $420 where we pay people's, indigenous folks as medical bills, not medical bills, sorry, electric bills. We have $62,000 for Kone Elevator in the public safety building. And we've got $50,000 for a couple of police vehicles. So our bills are a little higher than normal.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item four are reports. The Minnehaha County Regional Juvenile Decent Report for June 2014 and the auditor's account with the county treasurer as of June 30th, 2014. They are both filed in the auditor's office. Item five is personnel. A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Move for approval. Second.
A motion and a second on routine actions. Are there any questions for Jim this morning? See none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item six is application for abatement. Pam Nelson.
Thank you.
Good morning Pam.
I have one abatement request and it's for RD, record ID 29867. And it's for the amount of $235.88.
Are there any questions for Pam?
Pam, I know you've told me this many times before, but when are people supposed to turn in their requests for property, elderly property tax reasons?
They're supposed to have them in by March 31st.
Thank you.
But if they fail to meet that deadline, there is the opportunity to ask for abatement, although it's not required that you approve those abatements.
Right.
If they qualify in the past, you've usually approved them.
Okay. Any other questions? I have a motion and a second. Nope, I don't. I don't have a motion.
Go make the motion.
I have a motion and a second by Commissioner Barth. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item seven are notice and requests. A is to authorize the county auditor to publish a notice to bidders for concrete paving in the WH Lyon Expo Building.
Ken, did you want to speak to that?
Commissioners, this was a project that's included in the 2014 building fund budget for this year. To the good graces of the Highway Department, we were able to have them assist the Sioux Empire Fair Association in constructing the bid documents and the specifications for the concrete. If you authorize this notice, we will open those bids on Wednesday, August 6th, and we'll proceed from there.
Make a motion to authorize publication of the notice to bidders. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks again.
There are no planning and zoning notices today and there are no petition for compromise of lane. The next item is an opportunity for public comment.
This is the time when anybody can come to the podium, state your name and address, and speak to anything that is not on the agenda.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Michael Dupick, 9258 West Murma Trail. Commissioners, this morning when I woke up, I was faced with a disturbing reality. It's a reality that every citizen in this county and state faces. Our teachers are paid the lowest in the nation and we have $48,000 uninsured South Dakotans that can be covered at a relatively low cost to the state. On top of that, our state is in the top 10 states in the Union for public corruption. This one-party rule and peer has gone on for far too long and it's time to put an end to it. I feel that that way is on the ballot in November. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Are there any other public comments? Okay.
Regular business. It's not 9:15, so that was a public hearing. We'll move on to item 11, which is the briefing and status report of activities of the Minnehaha County 4-H program. Chuck Martinell.
You can do the introduction. I need you.
Good morning, Chuck.
Good morning. Chuck Martinell, Minnehaha County 4-H. I have brought with me here a couple of other folks. I'll let them introduce themselves.
Hello, my name is Kira McMillan.
I'm the new 4-H youth program advisor in a part-time capacity.
Welcome.
So for the first time in about a year and change, we're fully staffed again for someone with a permanent part-time position. So hopefully it's a lot longer than it's been in the past, so, but you're still stuck with me, so.
I think Chuck's going to give us a presentation as Ken can get some stuff on for us.
I was at small talk, so.
And how long has Justin been on board?
May 22nd, man.
May 22nd.
Where are you from, Justin?
Originally from Northeastern Nebraska. Don't hold it against me.
You kind of got that Missouri twang in your voice.
That's my Army accent after 15 years in the Army and a lot of time in Alabama and South Carolina and Arkansas and Oklahoma, so it just kind of all mixed. If I go down south, they say, "Well, you're not from around here." If I come up north, they're like, "You're from down south."
Here's no fit.
I can't resist.
Want to shoot from the hip here?
Yeah, you're going to have to.
Okay, well, that's fine. So on this here, I'm going to kind of shoot from the hip, which hopefully does all right.
I was going to say, Ken, yeah, just get in the pocket.
You know, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Potentially the iPad could go on the elbow.
You want to do that?
Yeah, that would work.
And just face up and we could see what it's showing.
Yeah, that works.
There you go.
Brilliant.
Technology.
There we go.
Wow. Mark it down.
Chef Barth with the workaround.
All right. Swipe it. All right. Well, as we were introduced, we're from the Minnehaha County 4-H program, which you guys have, thank you for once again, supporting us in our endeavors of reaching the county's youth. Brought with me, Justin, as he introduced himself, a part-time position, and also Kira, who's the president of our Junior Leaders Association. Kira's one of our outstanding 4-H members of this county and really a fine representation of the youth in our program. So 4-H, Minnehaha, 4-H in the county has currently enrolled about 479 youth. Actually, that number's a little bit low. We're actually at 491 as of current enrollment, which is a good number. Last year at this time, we were at about 421, so we've increased our numbers a lot over the last year. Lots of new clubs have moved in. We've retained a lot of youth, which is tremendous in a 4-H program. We are the largest program in the state, followed by Pennington, so not too shocking that the largest county in the state has the most 4-H youth. In January through May, though, what we have done, though, is continue that outreach. I've talked to a few guys out in the past. What we've done with outreach is we've reached 1,403 direct contact youth in a variety of settings in the county here. And that's kids from all the different communities in this county, not just Sioux Falls, so we are reaching outside of the city limits of Sioux Falls and recognizing that Minnehaha County is a big county. Lots of kids everywhere, so, which is great, so. Currently, we have 28 active traditional 4-H clubs also in the county, which is also the largest number in the state. The mission statement of 4-H, for those of you who have not heard it before, is we 4-H empowers youth to reach their full potential, working and learning in partnership with caring adults. And we are a program that relies heavily on volunteers, which we call leaders, to help keep the program alive and growing. We currently have over 100 volunteers in our program who run the clubs, who assist with things like shooting sports, our horse programs, and come out and do our community outreach with us, too. Some of the goals coming up for 2014, we want to broaden our target base. Basically, we want to get out of just the traditional families and start incorporating some non-traditional youth into our clubs, such as low-income minorities, those Hispanic backgrounds. Really, we want to try to start incorporating different cultures into 4-H and help having them grow as community members also. The next thing is we want to make sure our social media is up to date with information. It's a bit of a challenge to use social media in the county, but we are doing our best of trying to get connected with Facebook and Twitter and reaching out to our youth in those means. And we've had some very positive feedback from our youth and our families that it's very effective to get information out there through those means, but it is a challenge to get that information out there. So we continue to work through in the public library in my house, so, to get that information So the 4-H program, like I said before, we have 29 active clubs. These clubs follow the traditional 4-H model. Kira here is part of one of those active traditional clubs. She's actually part of a new club, but she's a longtime member of 4-H. And I just wanted to give her a moment to come and talk to you a little bit about her experiences with 4-H.
Once again, my name is Kira McMillan, and this will be my sixth year in 4-H. I'm currently the president of the Minnehaha Junior Leaders, as well as the president of my 4-H Club Recreations. I'm active in many areas of 4-H, from youth-in-action events like fashion review, judging teams in shooting sports, to project areas such as visual arts, home environment, and writing and public speaking. To me, 4-H helps provide, to provide ways for people to better their life recreational skills and to be publicly involved in the community. 4-H has given me a means to display and gain feedback on my art so that I can improve upon my work, so that I can better utilize my skill in art, as well as other skills in my life. 4-H has also helped me with my public speaking demonstration skills. One of my favorite events in 4-H is the cat show. Last year during the 4-H cat show, I was asked by the judge to help some beginners who are struggling with a cat show showmanship examination. As I was helping, I realized how much I have improved as a leader since I have been 4-H. Through 4-H, I know that I have gained and further improved my leadership and other important life skills. 4-H has helped to point me in directions I would have otherwise missed out on. I have a lot of fun, meet and interact with many new people, act responsibly, and gain many skills that would help me now and far into the future.
Thank you, Kira.
Kira is not one of our, what we call, traditional livestock families. Her family is more of the urban 4-H style, so this is representative of most of our youth in the county, is more urban style. We still have a strong livestock background in 4-H and we'll continue to have that long, that strong relationship with livestock and agriculture, but we also have to recognize that most of our youth are no longer, majority of them are no longer rural youth, they're more urbanized. So we need to increase our opportunities, and Kira is a fine example of how 4-H is reaching those types of youth. I spoke earlier about direct contact. 4-H is a program that really thrives on contact. The more we get out and reach the youth in the community, the more impactful our program is. Right now, we've partnered with 14 programs. Six of them, we have summer programs currently. We are visiting them every other week, every week, depending on our schedules and their schedules, and trying to match up with our programs. And these really offer a great chance for kids in our community to get the 4-H curriculum, get the 4-H message without being an active member in our clubs. And these youth receive six hours of direct contact, so they're, our programs are minimum of six hours. And this was just from January through May. We had, you know, I worked with 1,400 youth for six hours on minimum. Basically, once a month, coming to a program for two or three hours, working with a group of kids, changing them out, you know, and keep working and really trying to spread that message. And we've had a very, very positive reception from the community, and unfortunately, there's only one of me and there are a lot of youth programs that want us to come visit them, but I'm already stretched thin as it is, so we will continue to work as many as possible. And with Justin on board now, he's going to broaden our ability to reach even more We also do indirect contact programs, and those are youth that we see less than six hours, so that could be through Egg Day, could be through the Water Festival. And these are youth that we don't have as much impact, as studies have shown. The impact of indirect youth is minimal, but we still get out there and do that because it's very important to have these youth exposed to what 4-H is. It really allows us to broaden our audience and to spread our message to those who we don't typically have a chance to reach through larger events. What are the benefits of 4-H? Well, there's some proven results here. 4-H youth, such as Kira, are four times more likely to make a positive contribution to the county, and that impacts our county in positive ways. We also see that youth in 4-H are two times more likely to be healthier and also are two times more likely to take part in STEM programs. And that's one of the big emphasis of 4-H right now, is that STEM area and teaching kids about the science, technology, engineering, and math, and how important that is in our futures. So that is just a few of the benefits. The last thing I want to say is just basically thank you for your support. You guys have done a wonderful job over the years supporting this program, and I just, on behalf of the kids and families in 4-H in this county and those who receive our services, we just want to thank you. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions? Commissioner Barth?
I really appreciate you being here today, but just, you know, we're not able to support you to the degree that probably deserve to be supported. I know that quite a few of these clubs actually are in the city of Sioux Falls, right? Do you get any help from the city on, for your programs?
Well, we're working on it. It's sometimes like talking to a wall, but we'll continue working with them, spread our message, and see if they can provide some assistance, too. I mean, a majority of our clubs, I would say probably a third of them are in the Sioux Falls. Two-thirds of them are either in Valley Springs, Verwina, Hartford, Humboldt, Garrettson, Del Rapids, Baltic, Crooks.
Well, I look forward to seeing some of your efforts at the county fair.
Yeah, well, definitely, and we'll definitely invite you to our community barbecue and hopefully it works for your guys' schedules. I know you guys are very busy and it's not a great time of year, but we'll send an invitation your guys' way.
Super.
Any other comments for Chuck? I do want to thank you for the work you've done. The 4-H program has changed significantly in the county with the changes that came down from the state, and you guys are way understaffed from where you used to be, and I guess that's just the way things go these days, but we do appreciate the hard work that you put in, so.
Thank you, and I appreciate everything you guys have done.
Yep, thank you, Kira, for coming, too.
Madam Chair, I totally concur with your comment there about the way that funding and programs have gone. It's a shame, but we just don't have it.
Okay, we will go back up to item number 10, which is a public hearing to consider a drainage permit application from Robert Harms, Arnold Loffman, Jr., Jeff Johnson, and Robert Hamburg to conduct agricultural drainage in Section 1 of Logan Township and Section 6 of Highland Township. David Heimold.
Good morning, Commissioners. David Heimold, Planning Department. Received a drainage permit application from Robert Harms, Arnold Loffman, Jr., Jeff Johnson, and Bob Hamburg. Bob Hamburg, excuse me, one second. Okay. As you can see on the screen right here, it's Robert Harms. It's basically in this general location. It's about eight miles east of Del Rapids, right along the Minnehaha County-Moodie County line. It's located in Section 1, right straddling the line between Logan and Highland Township right here. It receives water from Moody County as part of the potential proposed drainage project. A notice of the July 15th public hearing was sent on June 23rd to the two downstream landowners, which is Jeff Johnson, which is, who is partially in the project with non-perforated tile that would run across his property, and Robert Harms, he owns property to the south. But since the outlet is within one mile of outletting into Pipestone Creek, they were not required to obtain downstream permission. However, they still need to provide the notification for the public hearing. The reason for this public hearing is because of the inter-county significance with Moody County. Any project, any proposed drainage project that would have a potential effect on any adjacent land, or for that matter. The proposed tile is shown in the locations on the map here, as you can see. And I'll just go through briefly the locations for the tile would run right here. It's looking east towards the stream on Robert Harms' land, and this is some of the feeder lines that would connect into that. It's actually a pretty significant area that's being drained, starting out from, in Section 1 of Highland, Logan Township. This is looking southeast off 244th, which is the township road which separates the two counties. As you can see, it's a pretty low area. This is looking south into the area of the proposed drainage. This would be potentially where one of the lines would run straight south. And then this is looking northwest, back into Moody County. As you can see, this area would drain under the township, under 244th Street, which the applicants have obtained permission from the supervisors there for a four- or five-inch road bore, which is one of three bores that they will have for Logan Township. This is looking south where the water would drain under the road from Moody County. This is potentially where it would come around this, the bend, would come around and head straight east towards where potentially the outlet would be. And this is looking northwest into Moody County. As you can see, this area is a pretty low area, which would drain water under the township road. This is the second bore, which would be a four- or five-inch tile under there. This is the potential location right here, head straight to the left on this picture. This is looking west, under the road, where the, where that location for the bore would be. And it would head into this area right here. In this area right here, the County Highway 104, which the applicant, they have obtained permission for a 12-inch road bore, which is approximately 30 to 40 feet, as indicated in the application, from an existing culvert that the highway has, which is, if I back up, if I go up right here, the culvert's about right here, and the bore would be right here. So this is a location looking south of the highway, onto an area where the drainage tile would be, would head roughly in this area right here. These are some of the feeder lines. As you can see, these would head down, and the bore would be potentially, go back here. So the bore would potentially be right there. This is looking south into one of the feeder lines that would connect. This is one of the concerns I have with this project, as far as, I was looking at the topography and how it drained, trying to determine whether or not that would work, but the applicant would be able to provide some clarification on whether or not they'd be able to make that one work. That tile line might not go in, but this one seems like it'd be going against the grade. This would be where the tile line would run south, as you can see on the map.
Pardon me, against the grain, David, you mean going uphill?
So going uphill.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. So this is that area that I was mentioning that would go, that would follow straight in line. This is the tile line that would be going uphill, potentially according to what the existing topography is, according to what our contours say. So it'd continue to follow this course until it reaches Jeff Johnson's property, which that would be the non-perforated tile, which would run all the way to the outlet. As you can see in this picture, it'd run just to the right of this stream area. So the outlet would be right here, more of that. And then this would potentially outlet, which, as I mentioned, is within one mile of Pipestone Creek, which looks a lot like this, where the outlet would be from the animal stream. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Are there any questions for David? Commissioner Barth?
David, how come, going back to making the water flow uphill, why don't they just tie it off? It looks like there's a natural line that just goes from the south to the north there, crosses back over. Why don't they just tie it off right there and save, you know, at least half a mile of drain tile? Do you know what I'm talking about? Just up, 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 right? You had it right there.
Oops.
Yeah, yeah. Go back to where it was flowing uphill, there. Why don't they just tie it off there? Doesn't that go under the road right there? Yeah, going north.
This one goes under the road, yeah.
Yeah. Why don't they tie it off right there?
Because that's where he was concerned that that line wouldn't work, that it wouldn't flow north?
Or flow south.
He was concerned that that little spot there might not.
Then it would connect with this line right here, the main line that runs all the way to the outlet.
Okay, but doesn't that natural water course actually drain to the east? Just to the north there? I mean, I'm looking and I can see the, I can see a pass under the road flowing to the north.
Yeah, this area right here is kind of, it's kind of a little bold. There's, there's actually a mound that's on the topography that would indicate that the water would flow that way, which these three tile lines would define, because the water seems like it would want to go that way.
Right.
But this area is where that stream was. There was a couple trees in that area, as you saw in the picture.
Okay, well, it's their decision, I just.
Any other questions for David? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wants to speak in support of this or the proponents? If you just identify yourself and give your address, please.
Yeah, I'm Robert Harms, and 24769475th Avenue, Del Rapids. And I'll speak for it. Also here today is Jeff Johnson, and Arnold Loffman's here also, so. This, as you can see from the pictures, that most of this drainage project is in the northern edge of Minnehaha County. The reason we need to come for a hearing is because there's part of the low spot that is north of the county line in Moody County that it's, could hook into this quite easily. The bulk of the acres are in Minnehaha County. There's maybe 10 or 15 acres that'll be affected in Moody County from the drainage. This land is being farmed, but it's year in and year out, even in a dry year, it's fairly wet, damp ground, and it has good soil profile, and with drainage would be a very, very good farmland, so it's not that it's low land that can't be farmed or anything like that, it's just that it's damp all the time, and this will help. Let's see. I don't know if we're going to find it or not. Oh, yeah. I've owned this land for three years now and Mr. Loffman, so both of ours would be helped a lot, and then the drainage. I guess in the past, there was an attempt to have a drainage through here, but the landowner in this area would not sign off on a drainage permit, so that's why we're picking an alternative route to have the drain tile. There may be some of this land that's a little too low to be adequately drained, but the rest of it in this area should, should be able to be drained adequately. Mr. Loffman could probably answer that more, but. Other than that, I'd be glad to answer any questions. We're not really going through any wetlands or anything like that. It's just going to improve some very good soil types and, oh, the other comment I would make, according to Google Maps, from this area to the outlet is about a 30 to 32-foot drop, so I think there's plenty of slope to bring the water down to this outlet. There's a little bit of a knoll right here, maybe two, two-to-three-foot rise, but this area is naturally a little lower and will, will follow right through here, so. And we did have, Bob Springlin's going to be the contractor, and he looked at it ahead of time and thought that would be a workable plan, so. One other option we looked at was bringing the drain tile this way. That would work also, but initially Jeff was going to be That would work also, but initially Jeff was going to be part of the project, and then he decided not to, but still very gracious about letting us do the non-perforated outlet tile through his land along that creek area, so...
Are there any questions for Mr. Harms? Commissioner Baris?
Mr. Harms, so are you planning on just burying the line a little deeper through that knoll area? You're not going to put in a lift station?
No, no, it won't need a lift station or anything. It might be a couple feet, it's not going to be tremendously deep.
If I may. You know, I understand that in Moody County, that their drainage ordinance is fairly permissive. If you chose to go to that north spot where Commissioner Pegg has suggested, would the opposition of that landowner, you know, preclude that from happening?
I wasn't present during the other one. Maybe Arnold or Jeff could answer that kind of question on that perspective.
Question?
Yeah.
My hearings, I have that problem. They're asking why it didn't work to drain through the drainage ditch just north of your land a few years ago. Would that be possible? It'd be worth it, so...
Come back to the microphone, because Commissioner Kelly can't hear either.
Could you give your name and your address?
I want you to give your name and then address.
Okay, Arnold Edwin Lofman Jr., 24432-484th Avenue, Jasper, Minnesota, even though I live in Minnehaw County. Anyway, as far as why we're going that way, the discussion on that little drainage ditch, we're paralleling with the main line, we're concerned as to whether or not it would drain adequately. So we're burying a bigger tile along it to keep from backing water up on people's property and stuff, is my understanding.
Okay. Are there any other questions for the proponents? Are there any other proponents that want to speak? None? Are there any opponents to this drainage? Any opponents? There are none, so we turn it back to the commission.
I would move for approval.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to move approval of the drainage. Are there any comments? Commissioner Baris?
You know, I know that that whole area up there is extremely flat. You know, Logan Township, I think there are three straight sections that have the same exact elevation, and so I know West Pipestone Creek flows pretty sluggishly, and if you look at the last picture of where the outlet will be, there's not a lot of, I mean, the bank on that creek is, you know, 18 inches higher than the water. It's very difficult to do drainage up there, and I just, I'm not speaking in opposition, but I think we have to be aware of that issue up there.
Mr. Harms?
Yeah, I could just make a comment. This drainage ditch area was cleaned out with a backhoe in the past, so it's a little, has a little more depth in drainage now down to the, it was cleaned out all the way down to Pipestone Creek, so at this time, the drainage seems adequate, so...
I have a motion and a second to approve the tiling. Is there any other comments?
I'll just say, I plan to support the motion, but I think it is edgy.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is item number 12. Consider a motion to appoint Ryan White as the citizen appointment to the Minnehaw County Public Defender Advisory Board.
Let's look for my notes. We are short the commission representative on that board, and Commissioner Bennigan and I would recommend Ryan White from Sioux Falls to be appointed as the citizen representative of that board. And there are two other lawyers that are appointed to that board that are appointed by the presiding judge of our circuit. And his application is on, in your iPads, and it's also available. I'd look for a motion on that.
Go make the motion.
I'll second that. I'd make a comment that Ryan's the current professor of instruction and instructor to the University Center here in Sioux Falls, and he's also an investment advisor for the city, and he's very active in junior achievement, and volunteers at the Axdale Park, and he's also involved in the Chamber of Commerce. He has references from Dr. Sharon Sopko, who's at the University Center, and Sue Aguilar, who was a former city council member. So I think Ryan would be an excellent choice, and he's been in Sioux Falls since, I think, third grade. I think he'd be an excellent participant.
I have a motion and a second to approve Ryan White as the citizen appointment for Minnehaw County Public Defender's Office. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Item 13. Consider a motion to approve the 2014 Holistic Defense Technical Assistance Grant application from the Minnehaw County Public Defender's Office to the Center for Holistic Defense at the Bronx Defender's, Tracy Smith.
Good morning, Tracy.
Thank you. The technical assistance grant application is due by August 8th. There's no requirement for a match of funds. This technical assistance grant is something that's supported by the U.S. Department of Defense, and it's something that's growing nationwide. The idea is to keep people from coming back into the criminal justice system, thus saving taxpayer money. Basically, it limits the consequences that can arise even when people get a misdemeanor arrest, deportation, loss of a job, breakup of families, loss of housing assistance, disability, veterans benefits, revocation of employment licenses, all those things that explode when people are arrested for a crime. Whether you get a client out of jail or a not guilty verdict, or a reduced plea agreement, we don't just simply hug our clients and then they go home out into the night. Those are often when the work actually begins for most of our clients. Unfortunately, that's when we close our files, and that is why people keep coming back into the system, offering services under the auspices of the Public Defender's Office, because they trust us, because they're protected by attorney-client privilege, because our secretaries don't sit behind security windows, because they don't have to empty their pockets when they go through the courthouse, because they're not screened for weapons, they can email us day or night from the jail, they can sign up in the morning at breakfast to see us, and we'll be there, because they can come in any time, and they can talk to us. They know that they can trust us. I think with this technical assistance grants, we will be able to learn from people who have the expertise on the proper way to find innovative ways to use the community to support us better, so that we can provide for our clients, and so that we can prove to the system and the courts that the Public Defender's Office can provide solutions besides simply locking people up, and gain more footing within the community, so that the county, you know, so that we don't have to keep coming to the county and say, "We need more people, we need more people," and hopefully give our attorneys some relief, you know, so that they aren't carrying 130 felony files and constantly having to balance their files with visiting clients in jails. We want to be able to help them more. So we feel that these are essential, essential work that goes into also being able to provide essential assistance at council, and I think, given that there's no cost to apply for this grant, even though it's coming up due in fairly short order, we would just ask for authorization to apply for it.
Any questions for Tracy? Commissioner Kelly?
Tracy, does, I think you answered this, but will this require any more staff in the future, or is it just changing the way our existing public defenders handle cases?
They'll provide training for our office. They might recommend that we go out to the New York office, the Bronx Public Defender's Office, to train under them. It actually indicates that they will come here and train us. They might recommend changes in how we structure our office, they might recommend changes in how we manage our office. I suspect one of the big changes that they will recommend is more social workers. They might recommend, they might actually recommend less attorneys, more social workers. I don't know.
So would you work with Human Services on this thing, where they've already got the training, or some of the training? I mean, this is after the fact, this is after, after the fact, really, isn't it?
I...
Or is it early on? Is it interventional or early?
I suspect that they are going to recommend working with the commission, Human Services, county welfare. I think it's more a collaborative process and actually working with people in the community. They, it's more of a collaborative approach, not just with our office, but it's through the Public Defender's Office.
Commissioner Baris, did you have a comment?
Just, Tracy, I noticed that the cities that have received this assistance in the last year are a lot bigger than us, so there's really, we can't be assured that we'll get this grant. I'm hopeful that you will, but when you look at, you know, Oakland, Atlanta, Memphis, St. Louis, they kind of are bigger than us, and probably have worse problems than we do, although ours are getting worse all the time, so I wish you luck on it.
There are also smaller offices. I heard of one out in Tennessee that also received it. The bigger offices probably receive more notoriety, but I think there have also been smaller offices that have received it as well.
Commissioner Peggus?
You know, this is absolutely something this commission needs to endorse and support. You know, 10 years ago, we were looking at potential situation where we were looking at expanding our juvenile detention center. We were looking at major opt-outs to try to fund that. And then, of course, the Annie Casey Foundation came forward with a new opportunity for us to look at, and of course, we jumped in with both feet. Not only did we avoid having to build a new juvenile detention center, but we had successful, successful program implementation, and amazingly, the state adopted it and encapsulated it in SB 70, and of course, we adopted that. And now Tracy's coming forward saying, "Hey, guess what? Some of the opportunities that they're doing out in New York are similar to what SB 70 is trying to encapsulate." This is exactly what we want to do. We want to build bridges, and it takes a community, and we need to start that dialogue. I guarantee that when and if we get this potential grant, if you go out to the Bronx, you're going to find out that getting people into the jail at Rikers is infinitely more difficult than you actually think. They actually have incredible opportunities for bond and for other opportunities in lieu of incarceration, that I think is actually where this county needs to be trying to build these new relationships and look at these other options. So I just think that this is something that we need to support wholeheartedly. And, you know, we may not get it this time, but, you know, I think it's very good that if we have the opportunity to get our foot there, start that dialogue, start communicating with people, it will really help out this county in the future, with some of our challenges related to the number of people that we have locked up.
Commissioner Baris? Okay, Commissioner Bennigan?
Well, I certainly support this also, and I think it's an opportunity for us to maybe slow the tide down a little bit on when we see these people and how often we see them, because a holistic approach is going to take into effect all these things that we frankly haven't been able to afford in the past, and probably still can't. But the issue is, we need to stop the intake before we get down the road with seeing multiple charges. My one question would be is, if in fact we are successful with this, will there be a lead person who will be responsible for training new staff locally, or do we send individuals to them in the future? Because if we can take that approach and continue to educate our own people, I think that's going to be a dramatic change in how effective this thing is for many, many years to come.
That would be a good question to ask then before going forward, before we actually sign, if we were approved and before actually signing on the line, we would definitely want to check into...
Excuse me. Does a grant allow us to do that? Have you looked at the details, or is it just so broad-based at this point that we're not sure about that?
I don't know.
Okay.
Commissioner Baris?
You know, I'm on the homeless advisory board, and one of the issues that we just discussed this past week was, what are we doing to prevent homelessness from people just getting out of jail, getting out of the state hospital, whatever? And this really dovetails, I think, with that, the idea that, you know, if we can find a way to stabilize individuals before they go off the deep end, it might be beneficial. And so I'm hoping that this, if we can pull this together holistically, where did I get that? I think it could be a great benefit.
And if approved, Stacy Teason said she was going to help me on this, so...
Commissioner Kelly?
I endorse this too. I think it's absolutely important, though, that it become a multi, I mean, even though you're the resource to start, that Human Services and Homeless Advisory, any interested parties that can participate in this thing, so that it covers a broad spectrum, even including maybe detox, but those areas that are affected by this, because it kind of goes back to my old concept of a crime summit, that we're bringing together, these people come in and teach us how to do it. And it's an opportunity that if we are awarded the grant to have somebody come in and help us with some new changes. I think the holistic method is necessary. We can't go doing business as usual, it's not working, so it's a good project, I think, or at least I hope that, but it will be a multi-department situation once it gets established.
I'm obviously going to support this too. We are always looking for training opportunities and education for our staff. We can't always afford what's going on, and I think in the last three years, we have seen lots of times we've had to cut training and travel budgets and stuff. And when you can get an outside grant that's going to come in and train you, or take our people and train them elsewhere, like they did with the Annie Casey Foundation, I think it's fantastic. It's education for all of our employees, so go for it. With that, I'd be looking for a motion?
So moved. Second?
A motion and a second to approve applying for a technical assistance grant. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you.
Item 14 is consider a motion to supplement $6,247.02 from the general fund to the county insurance budget, ASN 20106 County Insurance, for a reimbursement from Midwest Family Mutual Insurance for damage at the W.H. Lyon Fairgrounds. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, as the agenda states, this was an insurance check we received from Midwest Family Mutual for a transformer that blew out at the fairgrounds. A little critter got into it, and it did meet the, it did meet the policy guidelines for reimbursement. The actual damage to the transformer and the cost that was borne by the Fair Association was $7,247, and that, with the deductible, we have a $1,000 deductible. This, I'm fairly impressed with this company. This was, this was an insurance company that we switched to this year, and the policy had been in effect for three days before the critter got into the transformer. So, and then, so we had asked for a motion to supplement the insurance budget, so then we can make the reimbursement for the expenses of this.
Are there any more questions for Ken?
So moved. Second?
A motion and a second to supplement general funds for the insurance to the fairgrounds. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Question, Madam Chair. Is it legal to shoot gophers and squirrels at the fairgrounds?
I don't think so. You can't discharge a firearm in the city limits. But you're not in the city.
But you're not in the city limits, so I think you're good. Thank you, good. Okay.
Item 15 is possible consideration of a resolution for opt-out by Minnehaw County from the property tax limitation statutes, starting with calendar year 2014, payable in 2015. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, as you discussed last week during your budget hearings... Commissioners, as you discussed last week during your budget hearings, this was an item that you had wanted to put on the agenda as a placeholder, depending on how your budget deliberations went last night. As you know, in order to consider an opt-out, that must be done before July 15th of any year. And then, and so again, you wanted to have that on the agenda as a placeholder, just in case you needed to avail yourself of that, that budget tool. What you have before you is a synopsis of where we're at with the budget right now and the decisions that you made that, excuse me, last night. Just to recap, when you started your budget hearings, you had budget request of 75 million 637,676 dollars. To date, you have reduced that figure between the general fund and your special funds by a total of 3 million 558,657 dollars. What this represents right now, you have an increase in the general fund budget from what was approved in 2014 to now of 1 million 467,165 dollars. That quite frankly represents almost all of the projected new revenue that we figured that would come into the general fund, plus some that we are adding in cash in order to support that. The balance of that budget or the increase of 1.8, that's primarily some increases in the highway fund and some into the building fund for some transfers that you've accomplished during, during, or allocation to the building fund during this budget process. So as of right now, the budget stands, would stand at 72 million 79,019. And again, that compares to the 2014 budget of 68 million 791,522. To support that budget, to support that budget, you will see here in the general fund, that would require, at this juncture, a cash applied of approximately 3 million 393,000. When you started your discussions, when you had started your discussions, you recall that you were trying to settle, settle in at three, but based on past history and past levels of percentages, you know, between what that cash, cash applied balance has been as opposed to our general fund expenditures, you felt very comfortable with that coming in at a 6.75 percent. The highway fund, you made some significant changes there in order to bring down the cash applied figure and that, which is right here. And that, and that's primarily would reflect that your desire to keep a fund balance in the highway fund after all the projects are completed of approximately 3.3 million dollars. So at this juncture, this particular budget includes what you talked about with trying to implement some of the changes from the comp study that were recommended, you know, and so we've talked about that before, what we call the shave step plan. And that accomplishes a couple of things. It accomplishes trying to shorten the number of steps that are within our pay plan and to move people further into the plan earlier. And then, so those numbers are calculated in there, as well as you did authorize one new position last night in the jail for a courts records officer. And so those numbers are reflective in this budget. So it does, you know, quite frankly, again, the general fund budget is, like I said, about 1.4 million more than the 2014. However, you know, that's pretty bare bones. Most of that is eaten up by not only natural payroll projections, but also what you wanted to do with implementation of the comp study, with a couple hundred thousand dollars in there, you know, for some other things that departments brought. So it's fairly bare bones in that. And that's probably one of the things I know that you talked about during the budget hearings is that it's not, and what I think Pete Herriman outlined very, very well in his article, is that this, this revenue stream is just sufficient to maintain operations. It doesn't allow us to, quite frankly, meet some of the needs that I think some of our department heads are bringing forward. And then, so, but this particular budget, as it stands right now, will accomplish the things that you've outlined during your budget hearings and the parameters that you've set for those budgets. So again, you have, that's where we're at. We will bring to you, these will still all be incorporated into the provisional budget. This is not the final, you know, this is our rough calculations after your hearings last night. All the documents will be prepared for your adoption and consideration on July, I think the day is 28, 29th, July 29th. And that's the day you will adopt the provisional budget and we will rerun payroll and we'll make sure everything contains all of these items. So.
Are there any comments about the budget or questions for Ken? Commissioner Kelly?
I, I think it's important that, you know, it appears and I'm glad that there'll be no opt-out this year. It still has left us with a lot of unfilled positions, a lot of vehicles maybe that should have been traded out, but are going to squeak another year out of them. I, I think the legislators need to know that this is about as bare-boned as you can get, that CPI of 1.4 last year doesn't at all represent what we've recognized in cost increases. And we, we need to continue to work with the legislature. The legislators need to know that we still need some relief somewhere because our costs in crime are continuing to increase, our human services costs are increasing. It's kind of scary if they send a couple busloads of these immigrant children up here that, I mean, they're already in Nebraska, so Sioux Falls could be next. I, I think it's important that they understand that and that they give us the resources to work with.
Commissioner Barth?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. And I've got to thank our department heads for going along with the very difficult cuts that they've, they've allowed us to do. And I'm, I'm impressed with my fellow commissioners for their sharp eyes on some of the budget items. You all worked pretty hard on this. The thing is, of course, that people's taxes is, our taxes are high enough. I think Commissioner Heiberg, you put it correctly when you said that it's the distribution of those tax monies that's the issue. The state is in surplus. The city is in surplus. No one's going to want to give up those, those taxes despite the fact that they're, they're loaded. You know, we have, the state is building football stadiums and all kinds of stuff like that, but the idea of actually taking care of those convicted of crimes seems to be something they want to avert their gaze from. The city, of course, we know that they have money for swimming pools and movie stars. You know, when I worked at the phone company, we, we had to go through some budget cuts. And I remember saying to my boss that I can reduce service to my customers without additional training. Well, that's what we're going to have to do here in Minnehaw County. Our citizens aren't going to have to pay higher taxes because of an opt-out here, but we, we're going to struggle to maintain services at the current level. And, you know, just because the line isn't any longer at the treasurer's office doesn't mean that there's not lines at the public defender, not lines at the state's attorney. And we need, we need the help of our citizens and our elected legislators to help find an additional source of money for this county if we're going to be able to maintain service.
Any other comments? I'd like to say too, another place that we cut and there was, I think every department was hit. Human Services and our Human Services does housing for people who don't have a place to live and their budget was cut significantly. They also help with rent assistance and funerals and many other things, food, medications, and their budget was also hit. That trickles down to people who don't have. And if we don't have the money, we can't spread it out. So I think that this commission did a great job of pulling it together. Our department heads came willingly forward and found places they could cut extra money, but that still makes them very, very tight in what they do and they have to watch continually through the year to make sure their budgets work out at the end. Commissioner Pecus.
Well, and just to give an example, we spent literally 20 minutes last night haggling over used desks on whether or not they're going to be used in planning or equalization. And we were trying to figure out a way to figure that out because quite honestly, we were trying to figure out how old the desk could be for people to work on. We are that tight with our money. So it's just an example.
Thank you, Commissioner Pecus. Any other comments? Commissioner Benega?
Well, as most of us have already indicated, but I'm going to reiterate the fact that the system's broke. The system doesn't work the way it needs to work because as Jeff pointed out, the reserves in state and city government are substantial. But there are bigger issues. If you go back and look at the history of growth in county government, it's frankly less than the growth in state government and substantially less than the growth in city government. You cannot give one portion of the problems in government, which I would call the, the very difficult decisions or difficult pieces with crime, homelessness, health issues, burials and all those things to one group of individuals and then the other two completely just ignore it and say it's not my problem. That frankly, we talk about the federal government doesn't do a very good job of coming together and making good as public servants. Well frankly, they've brought it down to this level also, where we're not getting the kinds of cooperation that we need to take care of the people who need it the most. And it's disappointing that during the budget process, we had one legislator show up and really want to know more about how the budget and what the line items in the budget contain. You're not going to get solutions unless you become educated and it appears at this point, there's no efforts being made for us to get that education from the people that frankly control our purse strings because for all practical purposes, we've become satellite offices for what the state doesn't want to handle.
Well, if I may, you know, when I first got elected, I think Mike O'Connor said it best. He said, "Our state county courthouses are the 66 service stations across South Dakota that really the state relies on to get all their money." And if you want to transfer your, your tax title or your deed, you don't drive to Pier. You don't drive to the city hall. There's no parking. You come down here where there's a parking lot, you park your car in here and you come in here and this is where you do your service. So, you know, we, we chore that and I completely agree with everything Commissioner Benega stated.
I think the legislators have, over the years, looked and looked and looked at this. We've looked and looked and it's time for some action. You know, we've been up to Pier and they've listened to us and then they've sent us packing without a penny. So need to figure it out. It's a distribution problem. You need to figure it out.
Yeah, if I may.
Yes, Commissioner Pecus.
Maybe I'm wrong, but from what I read in the Argus Leader, at least regarding the state budget negotiations, they basically put them in and they, they had a 48-hour session where they put the state budget together in the last couple of days of the session. We've spent more time here working on our budget than the state worked on theirs.
That's not quite fair. The appropriations committee meets from day one, every day. And when I was there, to me, it would have been the least desirable appointment because that's all you're due during your legislative session.
I understand, but if you want to look at our appropriations committee, it's Darlene and Rich, and they deal with the 24/7, 365 in our counties. So I'll take that any day of the week, so.
And you look at every one of our department heads that put in hours upon hours upon hours upon putting those budgets together.
Yep.
And I think we all gave up an awful lot of hours sitting at Pier and reading at home to try to.
My point was not what we do. My point was that.
Yeah, but they work too.
They're, they don't, they spend more than 48 hours on the budget in Pier.
Any other comments or questions? Okay.
I don't know if there's anyone in the audience that had any comments or questions, but again, we will bring, based on your actions last night and the decisions that you made, we will now incorporate that into the final provisional budget documents. It'll look very close and essentially the same. We will take one more run at payroll to, you know, based on the decisions that you made to incorporate that into the new, into the budgets of the department so that it's there and they can see it. And that, and we will take care of all of that in prep to bring it to you in the provisional. So.
Okay. Go ahead.
I do have one last thing. The one item that I think was really telling on all of us was when we heard that when we're talking about the number of people that are in our jail, that are being transferred over from the jail for their initial court appearances over at the Unified Judicial System, their system doesn't translate and talk to the county system. And what the workaround is, is instead of having anybody from the state IT department come forward and work hand in glove with the county, is to hire, hire a sheriff deputy, basically to just work on the paperwork, to do hard copies, to try to facilitate that paperwork because the state isn't putting any effort to try to have their computers talk to the county computers. That is one of our biggest problems. And so when I hear that, you know, they're really trying, I kind of, it kind of falls on deaf ears when we're looking at hiring a person to deal just with the paperwork for the number of people coming through the jail over the UJS for paperwork. I mean, that paperwork, that's something obviously that can be streamlined and the data can be converted, but we just can't seem to get there from here. That's dysfunction.
Madam Chair, I would just comment that among the department heads that are present, we do have several elected ones, our auditor, our sheriff, our treasurer, maybe they might want to say something.
Does anybody want to say anything? Not today. Not today. Okay. All right. If there's no more comments on item number 15, we will move on.
The next item is Minnehaw County Commissioner liaison reports.
Are there any liaison reports? Commissioner Darren?
Just a quick comment that the new assignment that I got, the multicultural center, have to meet at 7:00 AM tomorrow morning.
Breakfast.
Thanks.
Thank you for taking that spot.
That's what you get from us in a meeting, Jeff.
Is there any new business? Commissioner? No, Commissioner Kyle. If you sit out there, you're Commissioner, so Kyle.
Under the auspices of new business, I wanted to bring forward a request that was made by the Summer Study Commission on Ag Land Productivity Valuation. They asked that I appear next week at their first hearing. It's I believe on July 22nd. And with that being said, we just recently received the values from Pier, our assigned values for agricultural land. And we are informed that we are to go up 13.5 percent countywide, which indicates since the agricultural productivity valuation was put in place, we will have gone up 53.15 percent in totality. With that being said, our total value then for Minnehaw County for 2015, taxes payable in 2016, is a billion dollars on our agricultural land.
Could you throw that up on the Elmo, Kyle?
Yes.
So, Madam Chair, if I might ask him a question?
Just recognize that that $1 billion doesn't go to Minnehaw County, so. Commissioner Barth?
So it's gone up 53% since the, the productivity rule went into effect? Is that?
That's correct. The statistics, and you guys know I love them, we're only at 35% of market value even with that. So it's a, quite an increase of 13.5%. Mr. McFarland was right when he said, "We don't have to apply this. We don't have to put this value on next year." But inversely, the state will take care of us at the other end. They'll move the factor for taxes from 85. They'll move the factor for taxes from 85% to 100%. There's nothing we can do about that. Just as a warning, they're going to cuss and discuss a lot of things next week at the meeting, so I just wanted to make sure that you didn't read it in the paper before I had mentioned it, so.
Just keep saying it isn't the county that did it.
Yeah.
Kyle, I mean, originally, wasn't that the assumption that the whole revision was going to shift more to the eggs, to the ag land and less to the urban? And if I remember correctly, I think that was...and it was more of a West River issue than it was East River, but still, there was gonna be a shift, and ag would bear a little bit more responsibility on it.
That, I believe, initially was their thoughts. At least they've let this play out five years to see if it has a chance of living much longer. But it...I've learned to not anticipate good things out of the legislative committee, such as this, because it's run West River, it's run by people that aren't involved in what we do here. Minnehaw County is the highest-valued county in the state of South Dakota for ag land.
And that's all productive.
It's all based on production. We're still the highest-valued, but that's only 7% of our total valuation. So for Minnehaw County, it doesn't mean anything. Minnehaw County's ag land value is more than, I think, five counties now. McPherson, and total up five West River counties. We have more value in ag land than they have in their total county, but for us, it's only 7%. But with that being said, we still have approximately 4,300 farms out in Minnehaw County, and this has a direct effect on them. If we're gonna take this valuation up 13.5%, they were not happy campers last year. I don't believe this will...this isn't gonna settle it down, so.
Well, I'll trust that the Argus Leader's gonna put something in the paper so farmers know it's coming.
Exactly.
And that this is the state, not the county.
I hate surprises as much as you guys, too.
Yeah, it's gonna come.
It's gonna come.
Commissioner Barth?
You know, going by productivity is one thing, but the fact is that those same crops, corn is half of what it was like three years ago. And I suspect there's one commissioner up here that doesn't want to be here for equalization hearings next year, John?
Oh, well, you never know. I do think it's interesting, though, you raise an interesting point. At a certain point, I was just thinking about the number of Chapter 12 bankruptcies that are out there. You can actually successfully tax people out of their homes. You know, these farm valuations are getting quite out of sync. I'd hate to see...I'd hate to see any of our local farmers getting taxed out of...taxed out of their ability to successfully run their operations.
Commissioner Benega?
My only comment at this point, other than my blood pressure going up, is the fact that I think that when you're done with this committee conversation, there's gotta be a way that we let the people know what's coming and who to contact, because frankly, all of those individuals are gonna show up for equalization hearings, and we'll have the same circumstance we had this year, where we just look at them and say, "We don't have any control over that."
That is absolutely correct.
And there's no sense in waiting until next June or whenever to let them have 10 months of fuming without knowing exactly what's gonna happen, because the people they need to see and talk to are the ones that are gonna go to Pier.
That's what we elected them for. Whether or not they listen to us...
But we need to do some education with the people who are here, because maybe that'll help them understand our frustrations with things we can't control.
Yeah.
Thank you. That was basically the reason why I wanted to come, so it wasn't a surprise to you guys next week after the hearing.
Yeah. Thank you, Kyle.
Now, just to be clear, these amounts aren't determined through market value. What we're looking at are the numbers that are actually coming out of Pier related to what they've determined our productivity here is in Minnehaw County, correct?
That's correct. As the overhead shows, to the left is the formula that they use to determine those values. And I've got a copy here for everyone to be...it's statistics, it's numbers, but these are the exact formulas that have been used the last five years.
Got it.
All right. Any other questions for Kyle?
Thank you.
It's gonna be a fun week next week.
Yeah. Enjoy your trip. Commissioner Kelly.
Is Scott still here?
No, he's not.
Oh. I was hoping maybe we could get some additional information on the pipeline issue.
Are there any other new business issues? Is there any old business? Is there any old business? Is there an executive session?
Yeah.
We have executive session for personnel. Is there a motion?
There is.
And a motion...
To adjourn into executive session for personnel.
So moved.
And a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Meeting adjourned.